Restrictions in this district are mitigated by the fact that the lot is essentially twice the size of the normal lot in this district and offsets a lot of the concerns that otherwise are legitimately raised for massing of home on the property. Then I, that I think is, is more or less the rationale in terms of the way the zoning law would, would look at this.
Hank, do we need to amend the motion for that?
You're, you're going to need, i- if that's to be the rationale for approving it, then what you would want to do is you would want to incor- include that or a synopsis of that in the motion so that you have a cohesive statement as to what you're doing and why you're doing it. And in that way, it would be a defensible motion. I believe that's what Mitch's goal is here is that you want to have some kind of defensible motion.
It's a little wordy. I mean, you know, it, it meets the concept that this, this lot and the size of the lot is, is different from the average, the normal lot in this district. I forget which number that is. I believe that on the whole, there's
I'm sorry.
Relatively less adverse impact. It supports reasonable use of the property. As far as opposition from neighbors and support from neighbors, there is, I recognize this is a tough one because there's very strongly held views by immediate neighbors. One of the, one of the immediate neighbors is strongly opposed, one of the immediate neighbors strongly supportive. I don't know if we can argue that they cancel out, but they're obviously both factors. So that, that factor is, I would say is not decisive.
So the motion would basically read, I guess, here's, here's what we should do because they're going to transcribe this. What we should do is you should state the motion, restate the motion and let Mitch add the adendum onto it. And then that way it'll get picked up and then you can vote on it based on what you hear. So if what I'm hearing is from Michael is that he moves to approve the project as presented for the 812 total square footage for the house and 215 square feet for the garage as presented and shown on the plan because it generally meets the four criteria for approval as a dimensional variance along with the rationale being, Mitch, why don't you fill in the blank for that?
The rationale is that, that the proposed use, which requires additional space to rationalize the downstairs and, and improve the overall usability of the property is supported by the fact that it have generally minimized adverse impact on, on this zoning district because of the extreme size of the lot. And also the fact that most of the additional square footage is added in the rear and is not visible on the street. And that, that is the rationale.
Hank, does, does Mike need to restate the motion?
No, that would go on the back of his motion if Mike agrees with what I said was his motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that if, if you are Hank.
I, I'm comfortable with it because we've heard it like three times along with Mitch's codicil on the end of it. But I do believe that you had one of the neighbors that might want to chime in again. That's up to you, the chair, if you want to have it because you did close participation. But if you do want to take a neighbor's comment, you certainly are free to do so.
I would open.
You, you have comment on the motion.
Right. And before I open it up to the public, I want to know if there's any other commissioners that have a, anything to add to what we've done so far? If not, open.
Can I make a competing motion?
No.
No.
You can, you can make a motion, you cannot vote for it, you can, but there's a motion on the floor. Then you have to see first off if it has a second. Then you have discussion on the motion.
That's why I was asking for further discussion on, 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 on the motion before I ask for a second. Does anybody have anything else to say?
I, I just want to say that the route that we've taken, it, it does take into account that lot size. And to me, that's where I, I go down to the basic facts of are we underneath what that should be for the size of that lot? As well as the encroachment, and I don't think it, it, it doesn't encroach to the left or to the right. It's just going back and it's going to be changes to the front. So I'm, I'm comfortable the way it was set up. Thank you Mitch for putting your spin on it.
I was saying, my understanding is there's never been a lot area coverage issue.
There's, there is not on that lot.
It has to do, it's because it's a total home.
Yeah, typically we deal with 50 by 125s. I mean, I live in the subdivision and I've got the same 50 by 125 that, you know, 80% of the people have.
Okay, I have another request for a public comment. It says, Chip, I think you're the neighbors. Did you want to say something?
No, we're, we're good. We're just listening.
We're already spoke.
Okay, I saw, I saw a hand wave, that's why I did that. We'll close public participation again, and we're at the point right now where I'm looking for a, Jay Schwartz would like to talk.
I just wish to reiterate my support for the motion as offered, as, and is a, as offered and is currently on the floor for the reasons that have been thoroughly discussed. I support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks Jay.
Could call for a second?
The transcribers will fix up all the public participation we've had on this issue. Okay, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
I would, Mitch, Mitch seconded.
Mitch Meisner second.
Yep. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show of hands. So for aye, I have Joe Klaia, Mitch Meisner, Todd Spurrell, Ben Phalik, Mike Wright, Gordon Glidden, and then you have to call for the nays.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have Adam.
Yeah, we have one, one opposition, so the motion carries. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you guys, I appreciate your time.
Yep, for that, for, for the presentation and, and the education too.
Thank you guys, have a great night.
Thanks, you too. All right, we're going to move on to the third issue, and Joe, you have to disqualify yourself.
Yes, I'm going to go on mute.
Okay, um, just to, so that I can clarify this for everybody, um, basically this is a situation that's kind of awkward. Joe has to recuse himself. He is a applicant to this and he's looking for some relief for offense. So basically he has nobody to present for him because he's not able to get somebody to do it. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go over my report. And if you have any questions, you can certainly ask me or see what it is. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that I can. Basically what we're looking at here for Mr. Klaia is a gate. He has, hold on, let me get to it here. Okay. He's looking for a variance to have a six foot privacy gate in the side yard contrary to section 40 dash 10.10 fences, halls of wedge, fences, edges and walls, B section B height and location for fences and E opacity and structural requirements. Basically what he has is he's got a fence around his yard and it's complete privacy fence. The issue comes in, in that he wants a privacy gate to cross over his driveway. Mr. Klaia has a support animal at his house and in the interest of the security of the house, the security of the dog, which they have to have as a support animal, or they've been recommended to have as a support animal, he wants to have a six foot gate so neither the animal can see in nor people that can see out. What we're looking for is about a 10 foot ask of six foot fence across the driveway. I would point out that there is a gate there now. It's a chain link fence. Basically what he's asking is to go six feet and go with the opacity. Part of the reason is, is that as the animal grows up and as it's currently doing, the animal and I don't know, I, I believe it's another German shepherd, Mr. Klaia's had a, a German shepherd previous to this, it can clear the fence. So what he's looking for in the interest of keeping the dog in the yard, keeping the support animal in the household and in his absence, providing some sense of security to the other people that are living in the house, that he be allowed to have a 10 foot, or 10 foot wide, six foot high gate across his driveway. If, if I've left out anything, I'm happy to discuss it. If you have any questions, to the extent I can answer them, I sure will. It's not a big ask, but I do want to point out that, you know, it is an ask nonetheless. Joe has, you know, we had the conversation, he wanted to stand on what I would say, he was okay with it. There's no adverse problems or anything with this. I've heard nothing from any neighbors to whereas this would be injurious or anything like that. The fence in this area exists, it would complete the appearance as well as offer degree of privacy on a small lot. Again, no adverse communications. I will point out that I was in the notice area for this, so I did get a notice on this. I, I don't get a vote. Just letting you know for self purposes. And again, the applicant wishes to complete an already partially finished privacy fence for both his family and the dog. Again, the dog is support animal and security becomes somewhat of a medical issue as a result of that. And again, with the literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance, and the variance is the minimum necessary. Again, this is a situation where you can interpret the spirit of the ordinance and see if that would apply towards what you can do for this, for this particular case. Again, it's a 10 foot wide ask, six feet high and connects a existing privacy fence to a home.
I, I'm confused. Is there a, currently a gate or a fence across the driveway?
There is.
Oh, so is, is what's the ask for an extra two feet of height?
He's asking for two feet of height and he's asking for the opacity to be eliminated.
But is there a regulation on opaque versus chain link and open if you're building at four feet?
Yes, yes. Once you go over four feet or once you go over 50% opaque, you have to have, you would need the variance because it's technically in the side yard.
Oh, so even if it was four feet, you'd still need 50%?
You would still need 50% open, which he does, which the circumstances prevent him from doing.
Any other commissioners have questions?
So do, yeah, the fence itself or gate that we want to do here for the ask is, it's a solid metal wood? What, what is the?
No, it's a wood, it's a wood privacy fence that's the same material as what he has there for a privacy fence now.
Like a cedar or whatever?
It's cedar or treated. I'm not, to be honest with you, Todd, I'm not sure which. But basically it's a, it's a wood fence and what will happen is, is that the gate will become homogeneous with the fence and it'll look the same as that and complete the look as far as his circumference or the, the perimeter of his lot.
Any other comments? All right, let me open it up to public participation. Anybody from the public wish to talk? Not seeing any, I closed public participation. Any more discussion among the commissioners?
Did, did this go out? Hank, you said it went out to all the neighbors. Do we get any feedback at all?
I've got, I've got no, no adverse comments. I do know that it went out to everybody within 300 feet. And I, I can tell you that nobody has said anything about it. The other thing is too, is that the way that this fence and the way that the houses are situated, the only person that would really have a view of the fence would be that person that's directly across the street. And I have not received any communication from them and they did in fact get noticed.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I mean, I, I guess this is sort of another case where you have special needs.
You know, I think without wanting to get into anything that might compromise any HIPAA or anything like that, this is one of those type of things where perhaps the Fair Housing Act would come into play. So I, I can't make his, I can't make the case for it.
I'm actually very interested in that, but we should get some legal advice on that subject.
I, I can absolutely do that for the future, but the way that the Fair Housing Works Act is that it basically in a nutshell, and again, this will be a nutshell, is that people have to be able to be allowed to use the house in a manner consistent with what their personal needs are. And a lot of times if you have situations where there's handicap or things like that, that accommodations would have to be made to allow that to happen. Now, I'm not sure I'm phrasing that exactly correct, but the Fair Housing Act basically allows for accommodations in situations where a variance or something like that, or a use or an ordinance may not be clear cut, but the need of the person is. So that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And Mitch, you probably know as much about it as I do.
I mean, honestly, I, I know enough to recognize we need legal advice on.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, it's whether or not that's the same thing or you can hang your hat on that or whether or not you can hang your hat on the fact that you are creating a homogeneous structure with a fence that's already there and has been there for years, or whether or not you're finding some other architectural reason to hang your hat on it. That's what's out there.
I, I think it's a, it's a very appealing a request and it's a little difficult to come up with something immediately. My thinking, I mean, we have, you know, I think everybody knows by now, I'm very pro fence.
I, I think the world knows.
People have 10 foot fences in the front of their house and do whatever behind them that they want it. But, you know, we have our fence rules and it seems to be like a big deal in Hollywood.
Always is.
Yeah, it always is.
And I, with, with due respect to Joe, I, I think that what, what we'd be, if you take away the individual factor of, of meaning a privacy, complete privacy fence, that also this particular dog can't jump over, then basically we'd be saying that somebody who comes in and says, look, I want to have an opaque fence of six feet tall running in front of that side door in my house. And what would we say?
I think the difference here is, is that basically you already have a fence there. So the ask is smaller because basically you're asking for two foot in height and you're asking for the opacity. A four foot fence exists there already.
Right, but if somebody has a side door, then they could put up a four foot fence, right?
They could put up a four foot open fence, whether or not they have.
Two years later and say, golly gee, I want a six foot opaque.
Then they would make their case.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that rationale is available to anybody.
Didn't we have a, a builder or homeowner put, do that recently in, in the woods where over the weekend, they put that up from that side door, six footer all the way around? And then they had to go back and, and change that?
We did have, we did have one who did not come to the zoning board of appeals. And at that point in time, work was stopped on the project and the fence was ordered down and they did comply with that.
Right.
I, I would point out that Joe came here first.
No, no, and I get that. And I get that, but I, it's the slippery slope thing, I think, I think that Mitch is talking about. I, I personally don't have any issue with this at all. It's how it gets worded and then, because we're all of a sudden putting a stamp of approval. And is it because of Fair Housing and, and, you know, what is the rationale? I mean, I, I get, does that stay, let's say, you know, five years, Joe moves, does that stay with the house?
Yes. Yeah, it does.
Yeah, and, and so there, I, I personally don't, I don't have an issue with this.
Yes, it does unless you condition the variance.
Can you do that?
You can put conditions on a variance. So if you were to say that upon the sale of the house, that the fence would be returned to four feet, chain link and Joe sticks the fence pieces in his garage until such time when he sells the house in a hundred years, he could do that or remove it entirely.
You can do that?
My understanding is you can condition variances.
But, but can you just create, I mean, what we're talking about is a temporary variance is what we're talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about a sunset date.
You're putting a sunset date on it only to the extent that you can do that. If Joe decides to sell the house next year, my understanding is you can do that.
I did not know that.
I didn't either.
I don't, I don't believe that it's a standard common practice, but I know that the zoning board of appeals can apply conditions and can apply criteria to a zoning board of appeals decision.
But, but I mean, here, here's the way, if you could do that, you could, you, you could say the following, that the, the six foot opaque fence is, is approved for a period of time to end at the earlier of the, the sale of the house by the current occupant or X, whatever it is. Five years, 10 years?
I, I would, I would almost put it upon condition of the sale of the house because you don't know, the conditions that exist that would necessitate this are not expected to change. And I, so upon conditional sale of the house and then to be real honest with you, that that point in time, when and if Joe decided, they decide to move, the need for this would go away and it would be incumbent upon him to remove the fence. Whether that happens or not, I, I mean.
And if he didn't do that.
I am dubious about that. Is that?
It would have to be, you'd almost have to record that.
Right, because if he moves and he doesn't move the fence, that's never going to make it in the listing.
Well, I don't, I, I honestly don't think that that type of thing applies here, but it is good to know that.
If, if you could find another way to do it and do it accordingly in another manner, that would be beneficial. Like related to the architecture, the fact that it completes an already existing fence that's been there for a number of years and would apply security that's not normally to that side. Again, there's no objections from any neighbors.
You can do a variant of the, of the thing we did for Murphy.
Yes, you could.
Well, so you add on the architect, I mean, the way we could do it, I, I would feel more comfortable actually, even with a somewhat concocted rationale that it's supportive rather than playing around with a temporary variance tied to ownership, which I really think is suspect.
I, I, there's no doubt that it's not a common practice and there's no doubt that it's subject to more challenge.
I mean, what we could say is that, that an opaque fence in this location is a reasonable extension of the architectural design of the home and that it represents that a privacy fence and enclosure for, for household use, including pets, represents a growing tendency in, in the way the homes in Hollywood may be.
Is that a motion?
Well, it's a, it's the rationale. The motion would be to approve on the basis, on those bases. Now, I think it's a stretch, but you know, it's a way to say.
I, I struggle with that. Again, I, I, from the perspective of Joe's ask, I, I'm all, I'm all on board. But now all of a sudden, if somebody else comes to us and just says, I want this because I have a kid who likes to climb a fence, now all of a sudden we're going to have.
Yeah, I, I can't go into it, but it's way more than that.
I, I get that, I get that. But I'm, I'm just saying that we're, how are we going to, I got, I'm thinking like Mitch and that's, this scares me, is, how does this, how does this protect us as we, as a zoning board that we didn't just go because we know, we know Joe and, and we did this and, and he, we've done everything on the up and up for this, but I'm just saying, if somebody else comes to us and we don't have it finally, finally, you know, spelled out correctly in this, in the, in the overall agreement, then we're, we're put, we're setting ourselves up and those that come after us.
Well, what you're setting yourself up for, Todd, is doing it again.
Okay, so here's, so here's where I go to the Fair Housing Act. So here's where I go to the Fair Housing Act and I say, maybe let's use this. Under the Fair Housing Act, a reasonable accommodation is a change, exception, or adjustment to a rule, policy, practice, or service. The Fair Housing Act makes it unlawful to refuse to make reasonable accommodation to rules, policies, practices, or services where such accommodations may be necessary to afford persons with disabilities an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling in public and common use areas.
Does that apply to individual residences?
Yeah, it's the Fair Housing Act, so it's housing. Yeah. I mean, that's what my interpretation would be.
Well, I mean, how urgent is this, Hank?
I could tell you that he'd like to get it done sooner rather than later. The dog is growing and the need is there.
I, I would, I mean, actually I don't want to play, I honestly would rather have a sort of half baked rationale that we thought of on our own than citing the application of the statute that we have no idea if it applies.
Okay.
And, but I would be happy if you wanted to go to the city attorney and say, look, we need some advice on this. I would, I would have, go to a special meeting. These Zoom meetings are kind of easy to get to. And, and with, you know, if it were tabled for a couple of weeks or whatever in order to get a ruling on that, because I don't want to invent that there's a statute that may have absolutely no application in the way it's drafted to this circumstance, even though it's appealing.
I would, well, hold on just a second here. Let me see if I can find out.
I would much rather have to defend why we did this down the road than defend.
I'm sorry, Mike, you faded.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would much rather defend later why we did this than defend why we didn't when an accident happens when this dog jumps the fence. That, that seems common sense to me. If Fair Housing Act can be a reason to, to make a motion for this, I'm comfortable with it.
I agree. I'm comfortable with that, that logic. That sounds great. My uncomfortableness comes in with, it's, it sticks with the house and now it, you know, I guess really doesn't matter. The next owner would probably take it down. I don't know. Wouldn't need it.
They did the same thing in the previous, this is just a little harder situation partly because there's so much of a, I mean, we have case after case after case of somebody who wants to build a fence in the side yard.
Yeah. I just want to be able to, to defend that as we go down, but I agree that, you know, I don't want to delay this.
I, from my two senses, I'd love to have this six foot fence. I think it's great. But the, the attempt is, you were sort of making fun, but my attempt is that, you know, people usually say, well, if we support that, we'll create a precedent.
Right.
And it's true, if you create a precedent, but if you, if you can, if you can establish a rationale for making a given decision under a given set of circumstances, then that you can use to distinguish it from another case. And that's the trick, is to try to have a, a clear rationale so that if somebody comes in with something that doesn't fit those set of circumstances, they won't get it just because.
Right.
The other system. In this case, the, the problem is that the rationale runs up against this note, this idea that we don't grant variances because of the personal characteristics of the applicant as opposed to the character of the property. And the only way in my mind that those fit together is if the personal characteristics of the applicant with respect to the proposed use of the property are general enough that they would fit other people.
I agree with what you're saying, Mitch.
Just, just food for thought on that. I can tell you from what I know of the situation, and again, I can't, there's only so much that I can say, but I would tell you that anybody in the same situation that Joe has would need the same accommodation. This is, this is that situation. Conversely, I can tell you that anywhere, if Joe moved tomorrow, anywhere that Joe moved would have to have an ability or an existing accommodation for this situation. The situation's not going to change, so the need doesn't change.
Well, maybe the rationale then is that failure to grant the, the variance renders the property unusable.
Well, there's a.
Under current circumstances. And, and just without spelling it out. And you have a record that there's a requirement that, you know, you're not going to force somebody to move.
No, absolutely not. I mean, I, I, whatever, whatever you would all feel comfortable with, again, I, you know, I don't get a vote, but I, I do, I am aware that there is an acute need for some kind of accommodation with this.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would, it would go like this, then the, the, the use of the property as. Yeah, I mean, we would, we would, it would go like this, then the, the, the use of the property as, as contemplated now and in the future requires this, and, and if it's not, if a variance is not granted, the property is unusable.
Or it would compromise usability.
Yeah.
So, so we're not really changing the use.
Right. I mean, you could, you could say that, you could say that the usability of the property would be severely compromised if this was not approved.
I mean, I, I don't think it exactly fits the four points, but it's, it's kind of good enough for a minor variance.
And again, this is a, and I would, no, no neighbors have objected at all to this.
All right, but in the meantime, if you don't want to look into the Fair Housing Act for the purpose of this motion.
I'll get Carol to write us up something.
It would really be interesting to know if this is something that we should be considering as an offsetting factor to zoning appeals.
Right. The other issue with that is, too, is that I, I would ask for an opinion in that there's something like that where it's a minor thing like this even have to go to the zoning board of appeals because it would violate the Fair Housing Act, or is that something that the city?
Something that you want to ask the attorney. I mean, we don't know which primes the other one in terms of, you know, does, does the?
Right.
I, I, I'm just very aware. I mean, it's actually, as a lawyer, I'm very worried about just kind of choosing a rationale from a statute, which may actually not apply in.
Well, and, and again, let's get the opinion. I don't know that, that based on what, what has been discussed here, that that is the all-knowing, all-seeing rationale behind it, but the rationale that you, as Spalster, just a few minutes ago, Mitch, I think is sufficient for a motion. It's up to you to decide, one, do you make the motion? Two, do you get the second? And three, do you get the?
I don't want to make the motion or a second, but I'm, I'm happy to vote.
Any other discussion?
I'll note, there's six members.
Your idea, completely.
There's six members that can vote. You need four.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I, I'd do the motion. I, I just don't, I'm, I'm back where Mike was earlier. How do we want to word it with what Hank had said? I, I vote move to grant.
And then have, and then have Mitch add the reason.
And then the, the reason, the, you know, doing the flip side of it, the negative, that the house becomes unusable, or I'm, how do you say that?
We're, we're going to move to approve a variance for a six-foot, 10-foot wide, six-foot high opaque privacy fence in the side yard at the location of the current four-foot fence. Because failure to do so would, um, render, compromise the, the current use of the property and render it unusable and unoccupable in the current circumstance.
There you go.
And then we probably, I, we might lose if somebody went to circuit court with this, but, you know.
Yeah. There a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Wow. I don't know if you saw that lightning bolt, but I did.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, let the record show that I've not heard from Ben. So I have five yays, I have Gordon, I have Todd, I have Mitch, I have Adam, I have Mike, and I have Ben. I now have six.
Nice thumb, Ben.
Okay, this seems to have a pretty good majority.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, it passes. Hey, Joe, you can come back.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay.
One more time. I'm gonna open it up for public participation. Not seeing any. I will close it, and I look for a motion to adjourn.
Joe, you're set, by the way, if you stepped out and didn't hear it.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys. Be safe. We'll see you next month. I have something already, so I will see you next month.
It was a very nice meeting, Hank. Thank you.
You know, these actually are not bad.
No, it worked out well.
You can put up whatever you need to put up, as long as you have it on this computer. You can do that, but, you know, it works out.
Yeah, it was very helpful, by the way, when you enlarged that drawing. It was very hard to see the ear.
You know, I always be like Todd and not wear pants, so.
The nice thing would be, I, I guess.
I was just getting over the visual.
Hank, when you've got a Zoom shared screen.
Yeah.
Even, it appears that we individually could enlarge, you know, move the drawing around, but it doesn't seem to work.